The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sandy, if you could please read our mission statement and take roll call.
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education and empower students to be successful in a global community. Board member Teltow?
Here.
Board member Cunningham?
Here.
Board member Old Tony?
Here.
Board member Tashan?
Here.
Board member Posito?
Here.
And Board member Fortuna, I'm also here, but Board member Sutton is absent with notice. What would you have for him?
Thank you. At this time, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Do I have a second? Support. Thank you. Mr. Walensley?
Turn it over to Mr. Thiel to go over the personnel report. For reservations or requirements, we have Tim, who is a bus driver, and also a security officer at high school. New hire is Michael Daniels, who's been addressing cases about coach. Nicole Lawson, assistant cook. Floater. Brad Nettles, junior varsity baseball coach. Megan Sins, assistant cook at lead. And then for notice appointments, we have Dejana Rettman as the online student manager.
There were no errors brought to my attention regarding the February 26th Board of Education meeting minutes. Tammy, I don't think we had any questions regarding the claim to the council?
I assume no questions.
No questions regarding claims to the council.
Thank you.
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
Could you just explain a little bit more about the online student support mentor position? What that entails?
So at the high school level, we have some students that take online courses, let's do Michigan Virtual, and the law requires us to assign a mentor. So each semester, we post for those. And so teachers typically either have the availability on their prep or want to teach, may pick up that position, so they'll be assigned a student, so they can check in with them at least twice a week to make sure they're on keeping on track, doing all the online coursework. For second semester, I believe Mrs. Rettman was the only one that applied for second semester. Am I correct?
So online courses, like through the colleges or through?
Through Michigan Virtual. It could be, I'm taking French 1. We don't offer French, so they want to take a French as a language, so they sign up through an online course. So the instructor is through Michigan Virtual, but we have, anybody in an online course, we have to assign a mentor to keep them on track, to make sure that they don't fall behind.
Any other questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item on our agenda is our 2024 Masonic Lodge Grant Recipient.
Good evening. For over 160 years, the Masonic Lodge has resided within our community, lending support to many charities, organizations, and youth throughout the years. To that end, they have voted to extend their philanthropy to area schools, offering a $500 scholarship to one educator in our district. I would like to introduce Mr. Mark Zink, who will be presenting his grant award tonight, but also just wanted to express our gratitude to you and your group for support to our teachers and to our students.
Thank you. Good evening. Hi, Mark Zink, kind of the chairman of the committee that orchestrates this grant program. You've heard his speech before, but for people that haven't, who are the Masons, you know, it was a symbol, you know, we're on Main Street in Richmond. Well, I think the simplest explanation I can give you is the shrine. Everybody shares the shrine, shrine hospital, shrine circus. Well, you have to be a Mason. This all starts at the Blue Lodge. You have to be a Mason before you can be in any other Masonic organization, including the shrine. So I would like to introduce to our people, we call the Worshipful Masters, the president of the Lodge, Jim Kinney.
Thank you, welcome, thank you for having us here, we appreciate it.
Go ahead, use your chair.
Over here, this gentleman here, David Showers, he's been a long lasting member for the Richmond Masons for, I can't even count how many years. One of the backbones of our Lodge. You know Mark Kirtu? He's also been a backbone for years also. We have Curtis. And we have Mr. Keestrock in here. We're very happy to be here and letting us present this award to you.
This time, we call up Alicia Gardner, recipient for this year. We had several teachers apply at Richmond, as we always do. And we have a committee from this foundation that reviewed those requests, and it's always difficult, but we selected Alicia this year for her mathematics program, which reminded me of when my daughter had to get that Tiara level, but here you won. I was going out and buying. We're updating them every year, so you probably can explain what it is.
The Tiara Texas instruments are calculators we use in our mathematics class. It is a hope that all the kids would use the common calculator, so that when it comes to going somewhere else or going to different classrooms, that we all have ones that they know how to use, and that there are ones that are out there commonly used, not just one that is outdated and we're not going to be moving forward with them in their mathematics.
Well, that's great. And if not the parents, they probably think it too. Because I remember, like I said, buying this. This is a check for $500, it's available to the school district, but it's for your use and they don't process it. But thank you very much and good luck.
Thank you.
We'd like to get a picture.
And then we'll put it in the spring or the fall, the summer newsletter that goes out. Okay, great. We get a picture?
Yep, we're going to go right over here against the Richmond Blue Devil sign, we're going to take a picture. All right. They're all going to be friendly friends right over here.
That's your elementary. You have your elementary, friendly friend, cross that.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, for joining us this evening. Okay, our next item on our agenda is the Macomb County Literacy Ambassador.
So this is a fairly new prestige here in Macomb County. We've launched Macomb Reads over the last few years, and there's really just a lot of great hype around improving literacy practices here in the county. So we get to select one literacy ambassador that truly kind of encompasses those great characteristics for this position. Ms. Turpin is our nominee this year. I'm going to invite her up right now. Congratulations. Ms. Turpin from the ISD, she's going to receive a lovely lawn sign, she's going to get a literacy ambassador award. She gets a photo shoot, professional photo shoot at the MISD. She will get meeting invites to attend all these lovely meetings. You're like, great, I want an award to get more work. But it's really going to be around great sharing practices for improving literacy across Macomb County. It is my honor to celebrate Ms. Turpin, our 2024 Literacy Ambassador. Ms. Turpin has played a pivotal role in our Adolescent Accelerated Reading Intervention, otherwise known as ACRI here in our district, training reboot at Richmond Middle School. This program serves as a vital intervention program for our ELA, and Ms. Turpin's dedication knows no bounds. She attended numerous training sessions on AARI through Oakland County over the summer, constantly seeking ways to enhance literacy. Her commitment also extended to working in our summer school, middle school readers and writers camp during summer school, and Ms. Turpin's passion and dedication have been instrumental in our ELA work at the middle school. So please join me congratulating Ms. Turpin and expressing our gratitude for her as our 2024 Literacy Ambassador. Lovely word. And can I just say something personal about Ms. Turpin? You are the only person that I know that has outread me since last year. We have PD together, we're always like, how many books did you read? How many books have you read since then? And I'm like, man, Amanda, she's always going to outdo me.
I am dedicated, that's why.
Congratulations.
Thank you. I would ask that the board please also stand, and we'd like to get a picture with Ms. Turpin as well as Ms. Gardner, so and then we will resume the rest of our agenda. Thank you.
Okay, our next item on our agenda is our secretarial paid leave absence request.
Ms. Sullivan and Mr. Thiel will come up. This, as a board, this is the first in my 10 years. I don't think we have had this request, so this is new for us, so we talk and we think we're doing this right, I'm going to be honest with you, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Thiel. So there's a provision in the secretarial contract that allows for an employee to request 12 additional days for a legal absence. Ms. Sullivan's going on FMLA leave in April and has requested the 12 additional days. A little bit about Mark, she's been here since 2008. She started as a preschooler, right? And then a paraprofessional, and now she's the secretary to Renee and Amy Rio, the Student Support Services Director. That's really all I have. You ready to move ahead?
I'm just, I'm a Richmondite. I've lived here my whole life, third generation of my kids to go to school here, so they have an idea of who I am. And I'm going on leave, I'm getting replacement done, meatball weeks. I have 14 days of vacation left.
That FMLA has been approved.
And then I just want to tack it on, I guess I'll give me a month. Hopefully I'm not going that long, so I really.
And miss in your office, that's for sure. So before, here's a recommendation tonight, and actually, to approve the leave, as with any leave, we would have to have a medical clearance from Mark's return to work, as we would do with any employee, but this would fill that void in her recovery, and we joke off, and I said, I might have to pick her up on the golf cart on the way into work.
Just pretty much share outside.
Any questions from the board? So like I said, in 10 years, we've never had a request like this, so it is in the contract, it's a benefit that they receive.
Thanks for considering.
Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is our Blue Devil Raids. Here, Sandy.
I do not have any today.
Candace.
Yes, I want to congratulate Mrs. Shaq for the band, they got Division 1 rating on their festival. It was last week or four. Nice with those players. So it was a huge, I was lucky enough to be there, being watched, and the band members did wonderful, they did great. So congratulations to Mrs. Shaq.
Thank you. Margaret?
My rate is Megan Schultz. As you board members, if you remember, Megan came before us requesting that we form our powerlifting team. And Megan originally was told no, and she kept working, not with the superintendent, got students together, came and did a presentation for us, and she stuck with it. It's something that she believed in and wanted for our kids to be able to do, and how much success those kids had is unbelievable. The girls, power to the women, girls, who, the JV team were runners-up, they were Allstate, Jordan Jones, me, Loretta, Adisha Palini, Lauren Reewell, Leah Demambro, Sophia Jackson, Logan Evans on the boys' end, won his weight class, first in his weight class, considered Allstate. But just the success of what all those kids did, all because one girl didn't take no for an answer and got things to happen. So she's my rate. I just love her, I'm very proud of her.
Thank you. Angela?
Yes, I would just like to echo what Candace sent, to congratulate all those students. I believe it was middle school and high school band that received Division 1 ratings over the last week, and I just wanted to say congratulations to them, and a special thank you to Mrs. Shaq, fellow Harvard.
Thank you. Kelly?
Paying back enough of what Margaret was going at with the sports, they like two things. So Ford Field was amazing for our wrestlers. We did end up having four, sorry, three people place, Matt Nish placed fourth, I believe. I'm a little fuzzy, I don't remember all of it, I have to write it down. Paulette placed fifth, who's our one female wrestler, and Faith placed sixth. So that's awesome. And then a shout out to the administration of the high school, all the administrators, because they are here at the most ridiculous hours for everything, every sports thing. They're always here. But even at Ford Field, Miss Borwick and Miss Zibo were sitting in front of us, you know, on a Sunday, bright and early morning down at Ford Field to come and support the kids. So shout out to all the administrators and all the extra hours that they put in for these kids.
I remember the names. Okay, I don't have anything this moment. Okay, next item on our agenda is our Student Board of Education rep report. Counterest here, but. I got it, Sandy. Margaret, are you reading?
Yep.
Okay, Margaret's going to read our student report.
Okay, elementary school. March's reading month is in full swing, the elementary is decorated head to toe. Schoolwide total minutes are 21,118. Our schoolwide goal is 200,000 minutes. If the building meets their minutes, Mrs. Manguni has to kiss a turtle. Which I would love to see that happen, so keep reading. Preschool has had many visitors to kick off March's reading month, with many more special guests scheduled to come in over the next few weeks. The excitement to read has been evident throughout the building. Thank you to all the staff and volunteers who helped decorate the school and make it look so amazing for March's reading month. In the middle school, middle school is very busy, reading month is underway, and we've been participating in several activities. Aside from listening to our guest readers, we have teachers decorating their doors with their favorite books, and students have decorated their lockers with drawings of their favorite book covers. Last week was parent-teacher conferences, and they were very well attended. Our staff conducted 483 conferences. For the rest of this month, we will continue to prepare for our upcoming state testing, which begins during the second week of April. Finally, the middle school is planning a fourth, fifth, and sixth grade event called Dance Party and Game Day on Thursday, April 11th, from 3:00 to 5:00. They hope to see many of their students attending. High school, as was discussed on Thursday, March 7th, the band participated in the MSVOA District 16 Band Festival at Anchor Bay High School. They earned a first division rating on stage and sight reading, and they earned a 20 out of 20 possible As. They will have their spring concert on May 9th at the high school auditorium. Last week, RHS students participated in our annual course catalog, where our students learned about potential electives and CTE courses available to take next year at Richmond High School. Students taking those classes could promote their respective classes. Our robotics team, 4130, advanced to the semifinals of the state tournament last weekend. They received the judges' award as well. The choir went three for three in first division ratings, as they all qualified for states in their MSVMA festival. States will be at the end of April at Marysville High School. In athletics, congratulating our high school powerlifters, they competed in the state tournament last weekend, Bryce Yeat took 10th and was Allstate. Brooklyn Jones and Josie McIntyre were in the top 15. Megan Schultz was top 10 Allstate as well. Our wrestlers, we had three Allstate athletes, as Kelly mentioned, Matt Nish, Jacob Faith and Paulina Chapman. Spring sports season started today, teams are holding trials and open practices starting Monday, March 11th. We wish all of our teams good luck this upcoming season. Hopefully there's no questions, because I can't answer.
Thank you, Margaret.
Yep.
Okay, next item on our agenda is our superintendent and legislative update.
In case you missed it, last week, the shout out was National School Social Workers Week, to appreciate our social workers, three very invaluable, or very valuable individuals in our organization. As mentioned previously, spring conferences were last week. Turnout was, it's usually lighter in the spring than in the fall, but it still was a very good turnout nonetheless. Just want to congratulate the choir, the band, the athletics, I won't repeat what I said multiple times, wrestlers, powerlifting, they just did an outstanding job. Bowlers, a couple weeks ago, the individuals going to states. Shout out to the National Junior Honor Society for their cause for a cause. They collected over 100 items to donate to the Macomb Animal Shelter, and also donated $100 to meet the needs of the animal shelter and their worthy cause. Last week, we launched free on-demand tutoring. We've had multiple parents actually already use the system. I think I forwarded to you a comment from one of the parents. It's been received very well for a pilot program that we're looking at. This is in addition to what we're currently offering in each of the buildings, but from 4:00 to 8:00 every night, Monday through Friday, any parent can set up an online virtual tutoring for any student in all grades, most subjects. There are a couple that they're limited to, but the idea is that when you're stuck, and you know, as a parent, I went through this with my own kids, there are some things that you just don't remember how you did. It's just another resource for parents. Congratulations to Mrs. Shaq and Mrs. Lazar. They received a life changer nomination. They are the only ones in Macomb County that did receive this award. Mrs. Staples did some research on it. At the end of April, they will choose 17 winners. One will be a grand prize, they have different tiers that they win, a monetary donation given to the school for them to use in their home. So we're looking forward to this, this is a new, I did not know about this in the past, but we had a parent and a student nominate Mrs. Shaq and Mrs. Lazar. Mrs. Shaq's a band teacher at the middle school, high school, and Mrs. Lazar is the art teacher.
I believe that anybody can go in, I went online, so they actually and did enough, I nominated them. So I don't know what site that is, but.
Yep, we will get that out there, promote it, but.
Can you vote, is that what it is?
They take, my understanding of the process is they get the nominations, and then there's a committee that looks at the nominations based on a criteria that they've established in their organization, and they identify 17 individuals nationwide that would be the winner. I think the grand prize is $10,000 to use it for them, in their schools to use, so.
Right, that's a lot.
Couple things legislatively, let's make sure. The House Committee is considering requiring instruction to ninth graders on becoming an organ donor. House Bill 5174 would require schools to provide at least one hour of instruction on becoming a donor and how to register for the Michigan donor registry. The Michigan Department of Education would be charged with assisting in doing the training, contracted with a third party to possibly do the training, which could be Donate Life America, Eversight, or Gift for Life America. Many of the state educational organizations have raised concerns about this bill and the logistics. Part of the bill would allow parents to opt out of this instruction with written request, you know, if this were to go forward. So this is one of them that we're watching. The pre-K through 12 appropriations began hearings, presentations, I should say, continuing hearing presentations on teacher shortages. They're calling multiple organizations, from Teach for America to hashtag Teach, various organizations, are calling on legislators to continue investing in money in the state budget to recruit and retain teachers in the profession. The Health Committee on local government and municipal finance met last Wednesday to hear a testimony in House Bill 5353, which would put any new laws, have to be mandated, heavily amended, essence is what has been used in the past. Oftentimes, our legislators have passed bills, but have them put money to support it. Most of the state organizations, if not all of them, are supporting this, but the bill has not been reported out, it hasn't gone anywhere, just another one we're watching to see what, how they act on it. There was conversation at the House Appropriations Committee regarding the universal free meals. If you recall, in the budget that was approved by the state, all students this year receive food, breakfast, and lunch. That's a legislative item that has to be approved every year, so they're taking feedback on how it's going this year and whether to continue it for the future. In the governor's budget, it does call for the meals next year to be continued. On March 21st, at 7:00, we have the state of the district that will be presented. A letter went out to parents in their email, another one will go out to them reminding them, as well as we invited about 140 elected officials, people who may not have kids at the school, but have some connection to the school, whether they're religious, our local governments, first responders, et cetera. I think I sent you guys a list of that, who is invited. So everybody is invited, you don't have to have children in the district to come on March 21st at 7:00, following the state and the district, which I'm estimating to be about 45 minutes-ish. Our culinary arts program is making cookies and juice for kind of an after event for that evening, so everybody's welcome. And finally, on one of the items tonight, you have an approval for cafeteria tables. This will be using some of our remaining bond dollars. The high school cafeteria tables are really, they're starting to fall apart, and they're causing some damage to the floors that we're going to have to fix, but. And then after this one, as we start closing out all the finals bonds, I am still finalizing, bringing back to the board with recommendations, you that last bond, which I previously, I think in November, sent you a list of items that were on that to-do list. This one moved up on that list because they're in bad shape, the high school. They're almost 20-plus years old, those tables, so. Anyway, so there are four that we purchased previously, those four we get shifted to the elementary school to help with enrollment over there, and so this will put new tables at our middle school and high school. We already previously purchased tables at the middle school. And that's all I have.
Anyone have any questions from school?
Yeah, will the state of the district, or sorry, the state of the district will be like available virtually for anybody who can't come?
Let me see if we can coordinate that, I think we can, but I just want to.
Okay.
I have to see what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
What's your plan, estimate of bringing that bond stuff to us?
After spring break time. There are two things, there are two things that I am working with OCA to get preliminary cost or ballpark cost on the wall in the elementary school, the class wall, and the bleachers at the high school, to get at least a ballpark cost of what they put prior to us. To get at least a ballpark cost of what they put prior to us bidding those out. We did at one point have a cost for the class wall, but because we didn't do it with the elementary, it has to be rebid. When I did say with the elementary, when we renovated the elementary school.
Any other questions? Okay, next item on our agenda is our items of interest from the board. Angela, you're good to be first?
I will say, thank you.
Sandy? I do not have anything tonight, thank you. Margaret?
Yes. Before I start, I want to let everyone at the table know that I have talked with Brian, and Brian knows what I went and said. But I just want to talk for a minute about Brian's quote-unquote leave of absence last week for a few days. He notified us that he had a personal situation in his family living away from the office and directed that to our board president, a copy to us to, you know, let us know what was going on. That evolved into a few days' worth of what I believe to be just absolute ridiculousness. People out in our community, former employees of the district, decided that it was fodder to be able to speak about Brian. And one of the things was that Brian's brain cancer was back. Let me make it very clear that Brian Walensley's never had brain cancer. And to make these comments, to talk about someone is just appalling to me. Board members who had questions, who I, in my opinion, out-of-line questions, staff wanting to know where Brian was. It's interesting that we were notified on March 4th, and it was maybe a little over 48 hours later, all of these things happened. Brian has the ability to take time off for personal matters, and he has the ability to have these personal matters be private. And for anyone out there who felt that it was in Brian's best interest or this district's to talk about him, let's please think twice about it. We have a very well-run school district. We have a superintendent who has every right, when a personal situation comes up, to have to step away and take care of personal matters. We have an amazing administration building, people that work in that building who can do their job. We have administrators who can do their job and run this school district. And our teachers, our secretaries, our media people, all of that, I'm not sure where the superintendent being out for a personal matter for a few days affects you at all. So I just ask people to have respect, not only for our school district, for Brian as a human being and his family. And let's stop, and those of you that don't live here anymore and don't work here anymore, mind your own business and work at the job in which that you're at that is so much better than what you thought it was here.
Thank you. Candace, you're next.
I don't think it.
You're good?
Nope.
Thank Kelly?
No. Okay, I just have two things. One, we do have a budget review coming up at the MISD. And Sandy, did you get the letter as our secretary? Did I? I don't know.
I have it. I don't know the secretary. It's supposed to go to the board treasurer, and no, I never. I'll say, I don't.
Oh, it says, "Dear Secretary to the Board."
No, well, I'll be sure.
I think that's the one that I just forwarded, got sent to me, but I don't know if they mailed it.
I did not get any of that.
Okay, so you did get it, and Margaret, you didn't get it either.
I mean, I get all the other invitations.
But not this one. Okay. Because I just want to make sure that we're covered. I did tell Brian if we didn't have anybody I could attend that evening, but it's our, it's the ISD, they go through the budget, and what's going on and what services they have to offer. So I just wanted, it's on April 18th, Thursday, April 18th, at 6:30 at the ISD. If anybody besides myself or someone wants to go, has a preference, all that I ask is that you come back and you give a little report. I think Angela, you.
I did it last year, and it was really enlightening. Unfortunately, I can't do it this year.
Okay. Like I say, I'm fine to do it, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew and was aware of it.
Well, and it all leads up to when we have to vote on their budget.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
So it does give us information about what's going on. Okay?
The interest.
Are we good?
Yeah.
I'll check your date and just let you know, okay? Okay, great, thank you.
So is there, do I have to respond then, or RSVP?
No, no, if we just let who wants to go, we'll make sure.
Cynthia. I'll make sure I tell Cynthia.
We got, we'll RSVP for the district, because they're going to give you the budget. You guys will all get a copy of it. We present it usually in, I think it's the first meeting of May, and then the second one in May, you approve their budget. It's got to be done, I think, by June 1st.
Right. Okay. And my second item, I do want to reiterate a little bit of what Margaret talked about regarding Brian's leave. I just want people to be aware that Mr. Walensley followed all of the procedures, all of the steps in his contract. At no time was this district in any, having any issues, problems, concerned. I communicated with Renee to let her know if anything were to come up. So I too am a little disappointed in the gossip that's out there. And I agree that it's not anybody's business when we take a personal day. We don't ask our teachers when they take a personal day where they're going or what they're doing. So I just ask that our staff and those who are talking, that they please consider that when they're out there talking in the public. Thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is public comments. Since the last meeting, both the board and the superintendent received an email from a parent from another district regarding the actions of a student at basketball game. Mr. Walensley did handle it, and as far as the district's concerned, it is settled. We had no public comments at our last board meeting, so there's nothing to address there. At this time, any member of the public may address the board. Please sign in and state your name. You will have three minutes to address the board. Are there any public comments?
My name is Tom Green, and I'm here to see if I can get some answers on why the baseball program from freshman JV and varsity are not allowed to use the main gym in the high school anymore. I'm wondering what transpired. I believe the baseball team has probably used the gym for, I don't know, they used it when I was here 50 years ago, so 50, 60 years, I'm saying. What's changed? What happened? And I know the old answer is, we don't have enough room. Nobody has enough room. No district has enough room this time of year for everybody to get what they need. So you, people have to adjust. I get that. I don't think the baseball team was asking to use the gym from 3:00 in the afternoon until 9:00 at night. I think they were asking for a reasonable amount of time, and they were just flat told no. They were given, they were told they could use the too many gyms. That does not work for baseball. If you look at the square footage on a baseball field, it is by far the biggest field that you have. Roughly 20,000 square feet bigger than the football field. That transpires into, they need a lot of room to practice. They have had to pay, key word is pay, to go off-site for two different facilities so they can conduct their tryouts and practices on a more appropriate venue. I don't, I think that money is fundraised so the kids can experience Comerica Park and go to Florida and better equipment and to maintain what they have. It should not have to be used for off-site facilities when all through the years they've used what we have. I don't know why we can't adjust. Maybe the baseball team has it for two days this week and three days next week and whatever. I'm just saying, there has to be a way that we can all get along. I think there's more to this than we know, and I'm not going to give them that right now, but.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you.
Would you like to hear back from the superintendent?
Nope. I'll hear if it worked or not.
We will have a rebuttal at the next board meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Okay, next item on our agenda is our action items. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the fiscal 2024 budget amendment number one.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve fiscal year 2024 general fund budget amendment number one, as presented in the February 26, 2024 Board of Education meeting and outlined in the attached resolution.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking for a motion for the approval of a secretarial paid leave of absence request.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the employee's request for 12 paid leave days after the utilization of the employee's sick, personal, and vacation time, as presented and outlined in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Kelly, stop. Keep doing that. Any discussion?
Other than, Marg, the hope is you're going to bounce back from that and you're going to be here faster than before, and.
I'll be back for the fun.
But Marg is an outstanding employee, and she is such a good voice and face for our district, so I wish you luck.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Marg, we hope everything goes well.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is the approval of the high school cafeteria tables. I'm looking for a motion.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract to school specialty for age 12-foot cafeteria tables and 16-10-foot cafeteria tables at Richmond High School for an amount not to exceed $47,136.48, as outlined in the attached documentation, using funding from the Food Service Fund and remaining bond funds. Furthermore, the board authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contractual agreement within the scope of the project on behalf of the Board of Education. Consistent with general provisions of the board purchasing policy, the superintendent is authorized to approve change orders on the project that are within the bond budget for allowances and contingency funds. This project is authorized in the application for preliminary qualification bonds, approved by the Michigan Department of Treasury and approved by voters of virtually community schools, which funding from the 2020 school building and site bond series one and 2022 school building and site bond series two is available.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I just wanted to just clarify that what it says it's referenced in the bond application, there's a line out of furnishings, which are the stuff that you put in, so that's what it falls in, so just as clarification.
Any questions, any further discussion? This is a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Sandy?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carries. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session. Anybody? This is one for the.
Real property.
Property.
I don't have one that says that.
I can't read it, can I? Right there.
Okay. Candace, read it right there. Pursuant to section 8D of the Michigan Open Medias Act, I move that the Board of Education go into a closed session for the purpose of discussing real property.
This is a roll, oh, I'm sorry. Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion?
Other than I'm going to say my statement that I would like us to have whole board here to just discuss this issue. So I'm just throwing that out there.
This is a roll call vote. Kelly?
See, Kelly.
I did.
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Margaret?
No.
Sandy?
Aye.
Angela?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carries. Just for our audience, we will not be coming back to do any business. Once we do our closed sessions, we're going to just adjourn.